Guys all set?
Yes, sir.
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Franklin Planning Board, the April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting. This meeting is audio and video recorded as well as on Zoom. And the Zoom call in number is three one two six two six six seven nine nine with a meeting number of eight two four seven four zero five two zero two four. If anybody's in the audience, there's one piece of information here for seven fifty nine Union Street. That is going to be continued. So if you're here for that, we're just going to continue that.
May twelfth.
To May twelfth. So just hear a motion to continue seven fifty nine Union Street to May twelfth. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just in case anybody was here for it. All right, now we'll go to, excuse me, general business. This will be a final Form H for three and five Fisher Street. If I could go to Amy at Department of Planning, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yep, this is, um, this project was approved back on December fourth, twenty twenty three with improvements to the parking, the landscape, and some stormwater improvements. They submitted their final Form H. There's been correspondence submitted from the applicant's engineer and as well as Beta.
Okay. Who did this? Matt? Is Matt online?
No, Matt's not here.
Um, Gary, if you want to chime in from, from your side, I think you guys are covered, but if you want to just run through for me and Matt, please.
No, I think Matt's, Matt's final report is pretty, pretty good in terms of, I mean, you look at the, look at the overall photos, you can see that the site is pretty well completed. I think the only thing that's left is a utility pole.
Exactly.
In that south Fisher Street exit, entrance, but other than that, everything else has pretty much been completed in accordance with what the board has requested.
Okay. Mike, anything from you from DPW?
Uh, nope. We're all set with that. Uh, Matt's been out there most of the time for the inspections and everything. Everything's, uh, we're satisfied with everything. We're comfortable with our outcomes and everything. And regarding that utility pole, I know the apple has been trying hard to get that moved to utility companies. We tried to give it a hand, trying to get in touch with someone too, but unfortunately, Verizon would be a little difficult trying to get a hold of them, so.
Verizon owns that pole?
Yeah, they're the ones responsible for moving it. It's been no lack of effort.
Yeah. Okay, all right, I appreciate. That's the only question I had. Uh, I guess I'll go to the board. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I think the project is great.
Yeah, I think you guys did a great job. We appreciate your revamping that. That came out really good, you know. It's a, um, it's a, it's a blessing.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna echo that. It looks great. Good job.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the final Form H for three and five Fisher Street?
Second.
Do I hear it? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're all set. Thank you. Okay. Uh, next item of business for general business, this would be for a decision for fifteen Liberty Way. Uh, if I could go to Amy for a quick briefing, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the planning board had closed the public hearing on March tenth, twenty twenty five. They were working out some final details with Beta and also the Conservation Commission at the time, which they have approved it, ordered a certificate of conditions, and I believe everything kind of has been finalized between our town engineer and Beta, and tonight would be a decision for the board.
Okay, good. Uh, I guess I'll go to Gary really quick.
Uh, we have, based on the meetings that we had, we have pretty much finalized the overall stormwater design. One of the things that we did do was after the meeting with Mike and the DPW, we agreed that although a little portion of the site, the new pavement is not going to be collected, they're actually going to route the water, the, the runoff that's coming from, I believe it's, is it seventy or one oh one constitution?
It's a Jason sign, I think it was.
Yeah, it's either seventy or one oh one constitution that's actually going to be routed. So that'll be routed through and that will be treated. So that will more than, more than compensate for the, uh, for the pavement that will miss, that, that will not be collected and treated.
Okay, so it sounds like you're comfortable. Mike, and you're comfortable with what you've seen in what's uh, in front of us?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's correct. We've, I've been including all the emails with, uh, the applicant and, uh, Gary and went through all that, so we're satisfied.
Okay, good. Um, I guess before I go to the board, I'll just go to the applicant. If you just want to introduce yourself for the record, please?
Sure. Uh, good evening, Daniel Campbell, Level Design Group, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll go to the board. Anybody have any questions, comments? Chris, Jay, Beth?
Just, um, so are there any outstanding comments that we need to, you know, put any conditions that they're, you know, finished, everything, or are we good?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I think we pretty much have, uh, I think the only issue that we had was, was the, uh, was the issue associated with the drainage.
And that's been resolved.
One thing I will say, we did cut the pavement back a little bit. So there's, there's a little less payment than what the pavement than what was originally shown.
Okay.
And you, you did say that they're done with concrete, right?
Yes.
Okay. Chair?
Awesome.
Okay. Um, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Sorry, sorry, close.
Excuse me, make a motion to approve fifteen Liberty Way, the site plan modifications. We're here second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item of business, this would be for an endorsement for fifty five, excuse me, Constitution Boulevard. Um, if I could go to Amy, please, Department of Planning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this was approved back on March tenth, twenty twenty five. Um, it's for endorsement tonight. They have added the certificate of vote to the front page.
So, uh, anybody have any questions, comments? No? Make a motion to endorse fifty five Constitution Boulevard site plan? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, meeting minutes. Um, does anybody have any additions or deletions to the February twenty fourth, March tenth, and March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes? If not, make a motion to approve meeting minutes from the February twenty fourth, March tenth, and March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next item of business would be public hearing. This is for a site plan for Panther Way, a senior village. It's a special permit in site plan application, and I believe this is more of a correspondence update. Uh, if I could go to Amy?
Yes, thank you. So, um, no new information has been submitted since the last meeting. Uh, the applicant asked to come to the hearing tonight as they were scheduled for, for the agenda to provide a verbal update, um, get feedback from the board on what direction to go with the plans.
Okay, good. Thank you. If you would like to just introduce yourselves for the record, please?
Sure. Brad Chapman, here for property group, applicant.
Um. Sorry, through the chair, one second. Can you guys just move the mics over? Sorry. Yeah. Just so that people can hear you. Thank you.
Should have known there was microphones. Um, all right. Do you want me to say that again? Are you guys good?
No, we're good.
All right. Um, excuse me. By sound horse, allergies is a bad time of year for me, so. Um, aside, really what we wanted to do, uh, tonight is, um, just kind of overall talk about the plans, talk about some density. Um, I, I do have, I think this is helpful, I had it prior too, so this is, um, I do have an automation video, it just kind of goes through the project so you can visualize it. It's forty seconds. Um, if the board would allow me to do that before we kind of get into some stuff, I would, I don't know. I think it's pretty cool.
You have the ability to?
Yeah.
Just a thumb drive?
Yep. Uh, just need Maxine to add, should be the planning board co-host. They'll see it on Zoom.
Can they see it behind me?
No. Chris, do you know what's behind you?
Uh, I can't do it the way that they're over there.
Oh.
I mean, I can do this if I share the screen, if that work.
I didn't know if anybody in the audience wanted to see it as well.
Yeah, you're sharing the screen. Did we get co-host?
I'm sorry.
Hi. Probably just me.
All right, maybe just come up here and stand off to the side if you want to watch it, if that being said. Just so you see it.
Okay, so you should be able to share on Zoom?
Just screen right here.
Just screen right here, so just slide it out. There you go.
Thank you.
Again, we, we had this done previously, so, you know, don't get too crazy on colors or stuff like that. This is really just something so you can visualize with a scale of projects, as a result of this. Doesn't have any music.
Excuse, Mr. Chairman, Brad, before you start it, can you just tell me where we're entering and our viewpoint right now from the plan?
So this is Panther Way, so you can kind of see, um, to the left side of the screen, you can see the existing building that we built on Panther Way. So this is, you know, right before Highwood, this is the main entrance. Um, so as we kind of start, we're gonna hit the mixed-use building, um, in front of the site, and then just kind of wrap up towards the park and then back down. Um, so again, don't look at colors, things like this, this is more of a scale and assessing, which is accurate to our plans, but still have to work on some of the colors and materials. Kind of you go up the hill, this wraps around. This is the backside of the mixed-use where there's a patio, there'll be a clubhouse there, that's gonna be a little more expanded. Um, as you kind of go through, you can, you know, see just, I guess, the scale of everything. Um, that's the end cul-de-sac, that's where all the single-family houses are. Kind of wrap it back around, you can kind of see the, the kind of side road there where the emergency access is as well. Um. Kind of quick, but yeah.
Okay.
Just something to kind of see what it looks like. Um, that's all. Sorry it wasn't more exciting.
It's exciting.
Okay.
We didn't put all the people into like, so this again, this was just kind of for visual, you know, to visualize everything.
I didn't see any curbing in there either. I didn't see any handicap, I didn't see any handicaps at the sidewalk entrance either, so.
There's some curbing, aye.
Please don't pay attention to the vegetation because they were a little overboard with that, which is what I noticed.
Oh, don't. See, I know, I'm sold, so.
I'm gonna get the color of the trim too.
Yeah, we haven't, all right, but, um, yeah, anyways, we'll expand on this clubhouse view and all that stuff, so we have a pretty cool idea for the back.
Just, just for the point of reference, Brad, right, we came in here, kind of came up to the cul-de-sac around, and you saw some shots down the side roads in back of the, of the commercial building as well. Just a, a point of reference of the, the layout of the site, if you will.
This is the trees this shot are actually just, they're a little off. They should be more to the, a little closer to that clubhouse. And, um, that basically gives, it's like, I don't know, fifteen thousand square feet of grass area. That's where the clubhouse backs into off there, so residents have an actual, I'm gonna put a budget cord to do some stuff back there. So we have to expand on that, but that's what that area was.
Okay. Do you want to, sure. Do you want me to shut this down without sharing? I can, some of these are just, I didn't know.
So what we, what we've done is we've had the opportunity to meet with the fire chief. They requested a little modification to the, to the driveway there, so we've looked at that, we have not met back with the fire chief. So, anyway, um, that's general layout. You can see we have nine single-family residential units, twenty two-unit buildings, and then the twenty unit, uh, main building, just for a point of reference. I know it's been a little time since we were here. Um, and we know from the previous meeting and some, uh, comments that we have received from the town planners memo, that one of the things of concern to the board was the density of the project, number of units for senior housing development. So what we've done is we've gone and looked at the immediate area. So we've blown up a tax assessors map for Franklin, uh, this area of Franklin, Panther Way is here, Route one forty is here. And what we did was we identified based on the tax assessors, uh, information, the various developments that have bothered this that are currently residential. So we have the Highwood property, which has a hundred and eighty-three units on twenty-one point six seven acres of land, which is a density of approximately eight point four four units per acre. We then looked at the Franklin Crossing site, which we've highlighted here in green. Uh, they have a hundred and fifty-six units on nineteen point one two acres, or approximately eight point one six units per acre. We then looked at the Presidential Arms site, which is off of one forty frontage here. Um, that has forty-eight units on three point two acres of property for a breakdown of about fifteen units per acre. And then lastly, we looked at Eaton Place, which has fifty units on five acres, or, uh, ten units per acre. Um, our site has fifteen point zero two acres in its entirety uh, after the, after the existing building is removed. That's what the proposed, uh, project will be located on, is fifteen point zero two acres, forty-nine units are proposed, which breaks down to three point two, two-six units, uh, per acre. So we just felt that we wanted to give you a breakdown and a overview of the neighborhood to kind of get a feel for what's happening down there. As I'm sure the board is aware, we then have commercial properties predominantly out front on one forty, starting with CVS, um, Max Rose Beef, then there's a plaza here with the Jersey Mikes, and then, um, three restaurants, excuse me, then Jersey Mikes, then we get into the Presidential Arms site, and then this is a four-unit, uh, place with the Wendy's, the daycare, and the, uh, auto repair shop located to the rear there, that, that above us, and then Vendetti Motors is located over in this area here. So it's somewhat of a diverse neighborhood on one forty compared to way, um, where the predominant development on the one forty frontage is more commercial, retail-type uses, restaurants, and then you're transitioning into the, the residential higher-density, uh, developments, and that's why, uh, we had chose to develop this portion of the site into a residential use, trying to, you know, match, similar match to the density, or actually fifty percent of the density of most of the abutment properties or less, but, but looking for a higher density in that area. And again, we're trying to propose a various, uh, group of types of housing, which consists of single-family housing, duplex housing, and then different apartments types that would be located in the building. Uh, Brad can certainly talk more in detail about the breakdowns of the, of the houses themselves, but we again, just wanted to kind of get that out there, get some feedback from the board as to their feelings on the project, on the density. We do have review comments from Beta. We do plan on moving forward, but we just, instead of coming in with a redesign project and having some potential issues that the board has talked about, we just wanted to kind of get past that before we went back to put, pen to paper.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, before I go to the rest of the board, I just have one quick question. Can you give me the breakdown of the units again? You had nine single, twenty-two duplex?
Sorry.
In twenty apartments, was it?
Twenty, there's nine single-family houses.
Yep.
Twenty duplexes.
Twenty duplexes, okay.
So ten buildings with two units per building, and twenty units will be located in the, in the, in the mixed-use building.
Twenty, twenty resident, yeah.
Twenty residential.
Residential, yeah, okay. 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 Should I go again?
If I may, just one more thing. One other question that Amy had in her comment letter was the base density, which, um, we did have an opportunity to look at that. At fifteen point zero two acres times one point five units per acre would put us at twenty-two point five three. Rounded up per the bylaw would be twenty-three housing units for the base density.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, before I go to the audience, I'll go to the board. Um, I guess I'll start with, I'll start with Mark tonight. Mark, comments, questions?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I do like, you know, the renderings that you had before, and this is, gives us a better idea of what we're looking at. Um, however, I'm still, there are a few units that you're looking for waivers as far as the setbacks. We were also looking at reducing some of the, the number of units. Have you looked at those, what is it, five or six units that need to have the setback requirement? We, we start with least those, eliminating those.
Yeah, so. Put that up. Um, unit one would require a waiver, sixteen and seventeen, which are here, and, uh, twenty-one and twenty-nine, which are these two here. So again, these units are abutting the commercial areas where the only one unit that we're requesting a waiver for that abuts Highwood is, is in that area there.
Thank you for that.
I, if I may, I can just bring a little light on that too. I think, um, when we, uh, first went through this, and not to say, um, the setbacks, I believe, meet the underlying zone setback, but obviously with more density and what they do, those setbacks get pushed back further when you get into the senior village. So those setbacks still met the underlying zone of C two, they just didn't meet the, the additional setback that the senior village had. I try not to have a lot of waivers, but that was kind of my reasoning of why we did it. Doesn't mean we won't take another look, just, that's, that's how I came up.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Answer that question. Um, with the mixed-use building, any designation, what, what is actually gonna be in the, the commercial part?
So we ran, um, kind of a traffic, you know, just kind of a quick study on a restaurant, which would be a high-traffic use. So we just, we don't know, we don't have, um, any tenants be happy to, you know, come back to get a, a use approved. But when we kind of went through this, we did a memo running it as a restaurant just for, you know, I'll say worst-case scenario in traffic. Um, but if a restaurant goes in there, I, I, I don't know, but that's kind of what we, we based it on.
If I may, Mr. Shrop, Mr. Chair, one, one thing we did look at is a more in-depth look at the parking for that, and the retail, a retail use or a restaurant in this zoning district is designated to have the same parking requirements, which is one space for every four hundred square feet. So if it was a retail use or a restaurant use, it really wouldn't affect the parking. I say that, and I don't want to get too deep into the parking, but there were some concerns about the size and mass of the parking and the layout, so we've decreased the parking. There will be twenty-two parking spaces located under the building.
Under the building.
And, yeah, within the garage space on the lowest level of the building. Um, so, um, but again, I don't, we didn't file anything, I don't want to get too deep into this, into all the nuts and bolts of everything, I just wanted to kind of put out there that there really would not be a change to the parking, if you will, if use changed from a restaurant to a retail. That was the, the point of the comment.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, one last thing about the comment with the, you know, the fire department was concerned about the mixed-use building, can you address that? But there was also an area of turnaround between the two buildings.
That's, that's part of what we're, so, we didn't submit anything because we wanted that discussion with everybody first, but that's what that circle is in the front of that mixed-use, is exactly that. After we met and came last time and met with the, uh, the deputy fire chief, we modified that so there would be a turnaround.
Even the dead end in between the buildings?
Yeah, he, his, his, his biggest concern was actually, yes, right there in front of the mixed-use. So he was, he was fine with the cut-through, um, as the emergency access through the other Panther Way, his big thing was in front of the mixed-use, and this is the stuff we started to work on with that, kind of turn around with. Should also be, you know, someone dropping somebody off, a guest that lives in, in the condos in the mixed-use, kind of a nice thing to be able to, you know, turn around and have a place to, to drop people off as well, so.
And my last comment would be, I know there isn't currently a sidewalk that goes on Panther Way from your property to CVS. I don't know about the rest of the board, but I would, me personally, I think I would like to see that completed up into your property, maybe with a, I know that the high school has them there, the flashing lights at a crosswalk right around that Edwards Road where people can cross. That would be my only other comment. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think I would also, uh, echo Mark's comment on the, the sidewalk. I think one of the big things we've looked for, or at least I've considered, for the senior villages is connectivity to, you know, external assets, whether it's commercial restaurants, et cetera. So having the walkability, uh, to the immediate retail areas, I think would be a huge, huge step in the right direction there to make the connections, uh, for the tenants, for the residents. Um, I believe, can you refresh my memory? What is the contemplated unit mix currently for the residential?
Um, so we, I mean, I can kind of give, give you all the numbers on it, but the single-family houses and the duplexes, those are all gonna be the same. So there's twenty-nine of them, they're about nineteen hundred square foot three-bedroom ranches. When we get into the mixed-use building, we'll have units that are two bedrooms, up to three bedrooms, but the three bedrooms are smaller. They're sixteen hundred square feet, um, and then the two bedrooms would be like eleven or twelve hundred square feet. Uh, I can give you, I mean, I could pass in what the numbers are. It's roughly, I would say, two-thirds small three bedrooms and a third two bedrooms for the mixed-use building. So we have a scale from two-bedroom, twelve-hundred-square-foot units all the way up to nineteen hundred square-foot units. So you, I mean, to be honest, you have quite a range of pricing in different, you know, those have two bathrooms, one and a half bathrooms. So there's a, I tried to mix it up between someone that likes to have a single family, somebody that wants three bedrooms, but, you know, still wants a ranch style. It's gonna be a little more cost-effective to go into, to a building, so really tried to give a big scale of those things. And I'm happy to, you know, submit something that shows what we have for counts, but I do have it.
Okay. And it looked like some of the units, I think particularly in the duplex buildings going up the hill, are those walkout basements?
So the, uh, yes, when you go up to, yep, exactly. There's a, there's a few on the left side that will have a walkout just because we're going up the hill.
Great, okay.
Yep.
Um. Yeah, the fire department answered that question I had. Um, yeah, I, I think I'm in a, a similar boat. I think overall, um, I'd like to see the density, I think, a little less than what currently is, and we've, we've looked at and, and explored the other properties in the area, but those are different times, um, different concerns, I guess. Um, so I think that's certainly something to consider there. Um, and then, um, what's the, or what's the, the search and the product been for one-bed units? What's the, the market, I guess?
I think that's gonna be really tough. I have a hard time with the two-bedroom units, because most people are, um. Generally, people are downsizing from a house, and having the extra room for, and again, we do three bedrooms, they're not like, um, they're a little on the smaller side, but people like to have a guest place for granted comes over, someone stays over and have an office. So it's really why the, the bedrooms are more important. Um, I think a one-bed would be really tough. Some of our two bedrooms that are on the small side, I haven't sold yet. They're very hard to sell. And it's not a, it's, I guess, just the market of Franklin and what people are looking for. They're very difficult.
Great. Uh, those are all my questions for now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. Jay?
Okay, so, uh, let me see here. Where do I want to start? Sidewalk. So. It's a long way down to CVS. Awful lot of development for one person to have to do for, especially if we're trying to scale down density on the site, so that. Do agree we need to have some sort of connection, but potentially, I hate mid-block crosswalks, but you can put a big block crosswalk there. I defer to Mike on that, it's his problem, not mine. Um, but a crosswalk at Edward Street, I just think there might be other ways to skin the cap from going all the way, because that, you know, seems like a big responsibility if we're, especially if we're trying to cut your units. Um, the setback on the stuff on the commercial side, personally, I feel like that's the homeowner's problem. I don't think the commercial industry is gonna care about it. Um, unit one, a little different. Um, could you just like rotate it thirty degrees?
We could absolutely look at that.
Or like turn it into an L, turn it into a Tetris piece or something?
We did take out the pickleball court that was to the south side, so.
You know, the unit, I don't really have a problem with it, but just like to get it out of the setback, just do something to it.
Yep.
Have an architect look at it. Um, and then, I guess when it comes to the density, I feel like you made a compelling case. You know, with, um, the, you know, housing, when you look at taxes and tax revenue and all these other things, assuming these, this is senior, right, so it's not gonna have kids, so it's not gonna be the school system, so it's not taxing. When we start knocking units off of these things, we're really kind of reducing the tax value to the municipality, which I kind of loathe. If we're gonna develop things, so I feel like the town needs to get its, you know, its squeeze out of the lemon, so I personally don't have a unit issue, but that's me. So, that's kind of what I got.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, I think, uh, you guys have asked a lot of the same questions that I was gonna present.
I think you guys have asked a lot of the same questions that I was going to present. I think one thing that hasn't been touched on in an elaborate detail is the waiver that you have requesting, is it the cul-de-sac? Two-hundred feet with how many units, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, the waiver.
So the waiver length from here to, the waiver request is not for the length, I shouldn't say from here to here, that does not exceed the six-hundred feet.
Yep.
There's a second part of the subdivision rules and regulations that limit the amount of units that can be on the dead-end road.
Okay.
So the waiver request is to allow twenty units past this dead-end road. So it would be these eight, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Okay.
So there's twenty, I believe it's thirteen.
And has public safety commented on how they feel about that?
Not specifically, but we did present Deputy Chief Barbie Ari with this plan. He brought up three comments that he had, he wanted an additional fire hydrant added, he wanted a turnaround there. And then he asked if we could look at doing something with that roadway, which we're going to meet with him again. Just to, I think, you know, obviously the fire hydrant's not an issue, the turnaround, we hope he's happy with, which now provides access from the parking area to that side of the building, which is what he was looking for. And then, you know, we'll see, but we can certainly ask for him to.
When you meet with him again, if you could just get him to confirm all of his concerns have been addressed and confirm that, what his opinion is on the additional twenty units. What was it, sorry? Yep, I'd be interested in hearing about that. This location, in my opinion, surrounded by multiple dense housing developments, as well as commercial opportunities. Seems appropriate for the density you're looking for, for a senior village. You're in a populated area with access to services, CBS, you know, restaurants, shopping for supermarkets, not too far down the road. So your fifty-five-plus community has the ability to access the services that they need easily. Gator runs along this route as well, so, you know, that's a convenient service. So for me, I think the density, I don't disagree with with Jay on that building one. Like if you could find some way to make that one work, because I think I was originally one of the people that asked about that setback that you had, and could you accommodate fixing those? I I do understand and appreciate your explanation that the ones kind of on the southwestern side are more oriented toward commercial properties, which, commercial properties, you're not impacting someone's livability. But I I do have the same opinion as, as the others over here about unit one, at least. And then if you could tell us a little bit more about your open space uses, that would be helpful as well.
Yeah, I mean, I can, as far as, so Rick has the, you know, the actual open space hatched out in the green with the trail. And Rick can talk a little bit about, about that. To me, outside of that open space, a big thing that, again, I didn't really show in the running because I didn't do our kind of update from this meeting, but is having that clubhouse and kind of having, to me, is really the open space that's going to be used the most. The trail is nice to go through and connect everything, and you can kind of see he has that outlined. I just, we have kind of a, a second area that's with a clubhouse to it, that I think is very important to this, so we have an exact, I mean, you know, we got rid of the pickleball court. But over here, if we have a bocce area, we have a big patio, you have a fire pit that opens directly, you kind of saw in the video, the second floor of this building is, walks out to grade. So, you know, we'll take the corner of that building and people will have a little lounge area in there, they can have a room that they can rent out, they can hang out in there. You know, we're thinking about putting, you know, a little stage there, just if people want, you know, I don't know, to comedy for the night or something. If you go around and look at senior villages that have clubhouses, the places attached, they have all this stuff. Whether it gets used or not, I don't know, but I'm sure, I'll say the baby boomers that I talked to and I sell to would love to have a lounge to go hang out on a Friday night, you know. Maybe have a, have a, have a beer and just kind of talk with their neighbors and then go walk home, so that's a big, big part of it for me.
I would say the same, that I think if you're going to be promoting this to folks that are downsizing their homes, that they need a place to have family over at birthday parties, celebrations. And the more space you can give them to provide opportunities for that, in addition to walking trails, I think a clubhouse is a great idea, along with, you know, not pickleball, but maybe bocce or something passive like that, yes.
Less noise.
So, you know, just to kind of head on this, and this is one of the challenges that we, we've had trying to best come up with something that would meet the spur of the bylaw. And that makes sense. So, the space we're talking about would be located here with an outdoor patio, we have put a bocce court in here, we have the ability to do an outdoor seating area for a fire pit, something like that. But that's not located within the open space, per se. And we, and the bylaw really wants the open space to be connected, not segmented.
Yep.
So we haven't taken any credit for that, but in reality, that's going to be the central gathering place. We have provided for a walking trail throughout the site, we have provided some connection points that the, that the board had, you know, looked for, making sure that we could, we could get people to the walking trail throughout the site. So we have looked at some of those things, added some of those things. But as far as other uses within the open space, we kind of looked at this area back here as not being touched, not trying to build more units back here in and around the wetland and kind of preserving that. And then preserving some of the buffer with, you know, the area where the walking trail would be. So that's kind of the idea, we certainly, if board has any suggestions or things they would prefer us look at, we'd be happy to do so.
Well, you may not get credit for it, is there, or prefer to take credit for it, is there a way for you to connect a green space you have that is part of your actual, you know, senior village bylaw, open space and connect it to where you're proposing the clubhouse? So it is contiguous?
Unfortunately.
Can we cross the road?
The road there that.
Can your walking path go over the road?
Yeah, I mean, you put a crosswalk, yeah.
That's what they're showing, isn't that what?
We have the path coming here to the clubhouse off the sidewalk.
It connects from there anyways, so.
Then I would say you could probably highlight that, I'm just speaking for me, I don't know about you.
That was our intent, I mean, we have the path that comes to the, so we were trying to connect people that were back there to the path to go up to one forty-third. So that we, we didn't call it open space, but we already had that, we're going in that direction. So yes, we can.
Yeah, but.
Find a way to make it work.
Yeah, and I think.
Bonus points for you.
I, I don't think we could put the clubhouse in the open space, per se.
No, but you can.
The grass area.
You know what I'm going for.
I, I think I know what you're looking for, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep. I was just going to say, otherwise, I think you're heading in the right direction, especially in the location that it's being permitted for.
And just to clarify on the plan, were that proposed potential crosswalk, that's a gated emergency exit only?
Yes.
So it's not a safety concern, per se?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, and we would, you know, propose to have the gate located up gradient from where the pedestrian walkway would be, so that vehicles.
Okay.
Wouldn't, wouldn't be impacting them from this direction, at least you can't block off both directions.
Yep.
I think this is definitely headed in the right direction, for all the reasons that Beth just highlighted, but I, I really think the proximity, the location in town, the, the general. Location respective to its immediate neighbors and, and more broadly, the, the district is, is great. I do, I, I would like to see particularly, unit sixteen, seventeen, twenty-one, especially seventeen and twenty-one are pretty close to the presidential arms, I believe. I, if there's any way to reorient, or if we do need to lose a, a, a couple of units, to me, that's, that's the, where, even the experience of the, the trail, or there's sort of a lack of vegetation in between those units and the adjacent site. That even the people who do end up living there may benefit from more of a screen or natural buffer. Just between the, the property and those closest houses. And then, unit one, yeah, if, if we could reorient it, just not have it be an issue, great, but I, I'm actually a little less concerned about that one. One question I had is, people tend to take the path of least resistance. So while vehicles can't, you know, it's gated between the existing property and the new development, yeah. Are people still going to be able to walk just through the, the bus lot site, or will they, what, what could we do to not encourage that? I guess I would ask, look, ask for you to look at that, because like realistically, if people see pavement and they say, see a way to get from point A to point B, not that it is easy, but, I don't know, just, just something to, I don't know if it is, would, would be something people would do, but.
We could put something, it's, it's kind of, sorry.
It was just a sign.
I was going to say, what's hard to see if you actually did do that because of the grade and the fence, like you'd, you'd have to go over some objects, and like, you'd have to, it would probably be harder, and CBS, as it goes up.
Yeah.
So I'm happy to, you know, put some signs and stuff, but I think if you actually went through that way, you'd.
Certainly wouldn't be enjoyable, like, just to, maybe to, I don't know, not that they would, but.
Yeah, let's look at something, see if we can just kind of deter the.
Yeah, but I do love the connectivity of the trail and, and even down to West Central, and then back up to the clubhouse, I think that's great. I think it is really important to have a sidewalk that is connecting on the CBS side of, of Panther Way up to, at, at a minimum, the entry of this site. Because you're not, nobody's going to cross the street to then come back across the street, right? I, I, I just think particularly, heading south, it'd be great if it headed north as well, but at least headed south and at least north to a point of a crosswalk to get across the street is important. Because people are just going to walk along the side of the road. And then, you know, otherwise, I, I, I fully support this, just something else to consider when you are sharing animations. If you do pedestrian scale or vehicle scale view, it makes it seem so much lower and like more human scale, when you show things from above, which nobody's ever going to see it at. It makes things seem bigger, which I know it's not, like when you're just walking on the street, these buildings are not going to seem large, like they feel right, the scale feels great, but just to.
Not come at the.
Normal people, like nobody's ever going to see it there, they're going to see it coming here, and they're going to seem a lot like lower, so. But it's helpful to be able to visualize it, and I'm looking forward to future iterations, otherwise.
We can, we had one that kind of drove up the road.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, like you said, move, add people and do that, and you'll actually feel like it's, it won't, you're not a bird.
Yeah, but kudos, I like it.
Thanks.
Good. A lot of the, the members hit a lot of my comments, I'm still thinking, number of units is still pretty aggressive. Especially pulling that road all the way up to the cul-de-sac, because what was the grade of that road, was what, eight percent, I think?
Yes.
Pretty substantial incline for people to go up there. In, in all that reality, I say that, that unit number one, just lose it, and then you take that one right off the ticket for the amount of units. As Beth was saying, and, and Jen, basically trying to connect the, the walking paths, I mean, you're basically left behind what's non-buildable. I think if you lose a couple of units, you can give some more green space for people to utilize, especially up towards the cul-de-sac. I just have a lot of concerns with the amount of units on the particular road. Traffic study, I'd like to see a traffic study, because I have reservations and concerns of cutting through the high school, I don't believe that's a public road to cut through there. So I want to see a, I want to see a full traffic study with the high school in operation, with the ice rink, police department, Highwood, I want to see a full-blown one. You're going to be adding a lot of foot traffic, and plus you have the students there, so we're going to be really careful with the, with the kids. And those kids walk those streets, doesn't matter if there's a sidewalk or not, they're walking both sides, so we're going to, we're going to really take that into consideration, especially if people are driving up and down that street, back and forth. Designation of affordables, I know there was some, I'd just like to, whichever units are going to be dictated for that. Size of clubhouse, what, what size of the clubhouse you're thinking, square footage-wise?
We had to be the size of a unit, so fifteen-hundred square feet.
Fifteen-hundred square feet.
I mean, it's not, I would say around that size, enough where you could, you know.
Utilize it.
Yeah, we weren't going to do a three-hundred, you know, put two couches in there and a room, it's, yeah, I'm happy to, no, happy to point that out.
Because that, I think that's part of a lot of the fifty-five and olders, it's a selling point for you as well, that you have a place to.
Yes.
For people to gather, I think that's a great thing. I think if you gave them a little bit more of that green space in the back section, that could be a benefit for you as well. And, the only other thought I had was, and I, I, you're definitely going in the right direction, it's the amount of units, and if you have a retail space down below, whether it be a restaurant or something. I would like to see something in terms of deliveries of trucks and dumpsters, and how you're going to approach that in the, inside of a courtyard or in the backside, to take that into consideration. And my last and my favorite subject, retaining walls, if you're going to have them over four feet, I want design drawings from the structural engineers on the drawings. So that way they, when Beta or anybody goes to inspect, they already know what they're looking for. And, did you go to ZBA for gravel removal, you approaching that?
We, we, we did have, for ZBA and for conservation, but we, we pushed those out to June fifth and twelfth, just so we could have an opportunity to come back to talk to the plan. So essentially, we want to get this to a point where.
Okay, but, because you're talking quite a substantial gravel removal out of there. So I'm going to go to my next point, would be, how much of Panther Way are you going to repair after you're done hauling out of there? Because you're going to probably, if you're pulling, what, eighty, eighty thousand plus, you're pulling a pretty substantial amount of material out of there, so it's a lot of trailers, indoor tri轴s. Doing the math, you're probably looking at, what, twenty-five hundred, three thousand trucks or whatever, whatever it may be, but. Yeah, I want you to take a peek at doing some recon, repaving or reclaiming or pulverizing Panther Way after you're done hauling out of there, because you're going to destroy it, taking it out. Sidewalks, I'm definitely in agreeance with everybody, get it down to CBS, you own the property in front on the other side, so you'll, you can manage your own easements and whatnot through there as well. But yeah, I think, I think, I think you're going there, I just think the number of units and the, and the grade and topography could be a little bit an issue there, that's all.
Thank you.
That's all I had, but I'll go to the audience.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask one more question, this might be for Amy, I'm not entirely sure, but when it comes to the affordable units and designating on, on the plan.
I was always under the impression that you are not supposed to publicly put which units are the affordable ones, and that is something that should be put on a plan that's only given to the town. So nobody can differentiate between which one's affordable and which one's not, is that accurate or not accurate? So I know we, we do tend to ask applicants to put those on the, the plan, I'm just curious if it's something that we should maybe reconsider and just have a plan submitted to the town on file.
So there is nothing written in the bylaws that they identify it or they don't identify it. I know the last time a forty-B came in for ownership, the ZBA asked them to identify it. So it's really part of the purview, I think, of this plan in port, if they want them to identify them or if they don't, to identify them. I think more saying, it'd probably be fair to say that they be equal to the market rate ones, and they be built equal to the market rate ones, and be scattered throughout the place, is probably a better way to identify.
Kind of where it's going.
Where, where the affordables should be.
That's kind of, yeah, that's how I feel about it.
I just didn't want them all in the, the commercial side of the complex, I would like them spread out, but that's what I was asking.
Right, and that, that can be a condition, that you equally spread the apartments, single-family and duplexes.
Yeah.
For the affordables.
Sure.
Yeah, like, and it may just be that, you know, how many you have, you know.
Sure. You know where I was going with that, I just wanted to make sure that, one, they were there, and two, that they just weren't all in the largest building, that's all.
If I may, I did speak with the housing authority, and, and from what I understand is, so since we have a couple different models, so we have a mixed-use building, then we have duplexes and singles, I have to equally distribute this between them. So I, so I can't just put them all in one place, so that's, that's all, what we have to follow. So I'd be, you know, happy to designate out of this, you know, yeah, certain units, even if I just say it's this particular model, instead of saying that house, but it's spread out evenly.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yes.
So I, but I guess I'll, I'll go to the audience, does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments for the applicant?
No.
You're good, all right.
You can't see anyone off, is there anyone online?
Actually, Brad, do you want to take that down, just ask Maxine, sorry, if anyone's raising their hand, is anyone raising their hand, Maxine? Um, actually, Brad, do you wanna take that down, just ask Maxine, sorry, if anyone's raising their hands, is anyone raising their hand, Maxine?
Now.
There we go.
Well, I, I, I guess you got a lot of in, uh, information in the board.
We did, thank you.
Got some marching orders kind of per se, but yeah, I think you definitely, uh, had it in the right direction as the rest of the board has, uh, commented on.
Appreciate that, thank you.
This is very helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to continue?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, well, wait, Amy. Did, you wanna make a motion to continue, um, it's gonna be a while out if you're gonna.
Probably June second. May twelfth, we only have May twelfth until the second.
Yeah, I mean, um.
Give you enough time? Or you wanna push it up, give them more time?
We're gonna put it right on gap.
You gotta put it on me.
I think six to would be good.
Yeah, so we, just a, a clarify for Mr. Chairman, we have a lot of the comments, you know, regardless of how we change this a little bit, a lot of the, keep a lot of the road and stuff the same and just that, you know. Modify some other stuff, a lot of the comments hold true from their original set.
Okay. So, I apologize, Amy, what was that date?
We have May twelfth or June second.
We'll go June second. Uh, so make a motion to continue, um, Panther Way cycling until June second, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. How busy you are.
I'm not, so.
Okay, alright, yeah, great.
He's gonna be after tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on, grab that, please. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too.
Okay. Uh, next item of business, this will be for a zoning bylaw amendment, uh, amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-five, this is a floodplain overlay district. Uh, Amy, if I could go to you for Department of Plan, please?
Thank you, um, I should kind of give credit to our building commissioner who put most of this together and he is on Zoom for questions. Um, this is a requirement by the state that we update our floodplain district in the bylaw. Um, it's been, already a draft has been sent to the state, um, which they are pleased with. And this is mainly to, so that the town can continue to carry their flood insurance rate map. Um, and there was a deadline of July eighth to get this in and that's been the urgency to push this through.
Do we need, it's a new hearing, right? We need to make a motion to waive the reading?
Yeah.
Make a motion to waive the reading?
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I guess I'll, um, Gus, if, if you're on, if you wanna give us a quick brief from your side, please, if you could?
Oh, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is something that we did maybe four or five years ago during COVID and it comes up every so often and the reason it's done is because. It's important that the town of Franklin relies in this updating on our flood insurance rate maps to reduce the financial risks for property owners and renters through insurance. In exchange, communities adopt the floodplain management regulations that reduce further flood damages. So it really boils down to a little bit of tweaking of the map because, um, flood areas do move. And they also implemented me as the designee for it, I'll be the floodplain administrator in town now, if this does pass. And also, um, we, we kind of deal with this a lot when we issue building permits and it'd be a variance process through the state now. If someone's in floodplain and the base elevation of the foundation, oh, I'm sorry, the first floor, which would possibly, more than likely be the, the basement slab. And it might not be, but if it's below that floodplain, um, elevation, they have to apply to the state for variance. And there's cases where they may actually get approval, it's just how they mediate through the process, um, by having an engineer. Design it in a way that meets all the, the criteria, and that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Alright, oh, good, thank you, Gus. Um, I guess I'll go to the board, anybody have any comments or questions? I don't have any comments.
Requirement?
Chris?
Need.
Requirement for insurance, you can do it. Go ahead, Chris.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, through the chair, uh, Gus, you had mentioned that they change in the maps, obviously update whenever they update them. Are homeowners notified if they're now in a flood zone or how do they, is, is that anything we have any control or, or the town has control over notifying so that now to update their insurance?
When they build a new house in the area of floodplain or they're existing, the insurance companies notify them.
Great, thank you.
Hi, Jay?
Nope. Audience.
Excuse me?
Audience.
Yeah, anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? No? Um, okay, so make a motion to.
Recommend.
Recommend the floodplain overlay district, uh, amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-five, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Gus. Okay, so our next item of business, this would be for, uh, fifty Constitution Boulevard site plan application. If I could go to Amy for a quick review, please?
Thank you, so, um, I know at the last meeting they were waiting on conservation, um, commission, um, approval, which has happened. Um, they have requested three waivers if the board were to make a decision. They have provided a decommissioning bond, um, that's been proposed in the amount of a hundred and eighty, eighty-nine thousand, uh, one hundred and twenty-seven. Uh, I would recommend that being a condition, so this project's related to the solar panels, um, being put on the ground and on the parking lot and on the ground. Uh, they are in front of ZBA, I believe this week, they need ZBA approval for the street canopies.
Okay. So, um, Gary, I guess so.
Well, I think they've pretty much answered all, all of the issues and responded to all of the issues that we had relative to it. Uh, the only thing I will say is, uh, they did provide us with a, with a lighting plan, they are gonna put LEDs up underneath there, so the lights that are gonna be moved, no issues with that. There are, I think there's eight trees, eight trees that are gonna be taken down, and I know they haven't shown it, but that was one of the issues I left to the board. If you want, if you wanna designate in terms of where you want and where you wanna leave it, or you want maybe take the trees and put them elsewhere, I'll leave that to you.
Okay, good, thank you, Mike?
No, we didn't have anything else, they, they previously addressed anything, any comments?
Thank you. Um, if, if you just wanna introduce yourselves for the record too, please?
Sure. Brendan Reilly, a land design engineers.
Raven Hatta, Honeywell applicant.
Good, thank you, uh, I guess I'll go to the board, um, I'll start with Jen first, Jen, questions, comments?
My only comment, and I, I don't know if this can be just a part or approved as a part of the decommissioning plan, is that the bond amount. Have the ability to increase in perpetuity per annum, per escalation without a finite amount of time designated. I believe this bond, if I'm remembering correctly from previous correspondence, it was based on like a certain number of years with escalation included to decommissioning, it could be, maybe I'm making that up. But, um, if it ends up being up five years longer or ten years longer, well then that's five years and ten years more expensive. So I just wanna make sure that, that final amount is. Somehow, uh, accounted for.
I don't have the bond in front of me, however, they do typically plan these bonds to be anywhere from twenty to thirty years. And sometimes they, it normally includes anywhere from like a five to fifteen percent to in, in, increase over that time.
Yeah, I think what I saw in, like I said in previous meetings or some draft of the, sorry, was for twenty years, I could be wrong. But I, I just wanted, cause if it goes to thirty years, that's a huge difference in cost for ten years of escalation, so that's all, but otherwise.
And, Mr. Chair, real quick, uh, to, Amy, did you say five to fifteen from year one to year twenty or five to fifteen per year?
It was per year.
Increase.
Total.
That seems way too light.
Yeah, I think it was five percent per year, at least.
I think it was five percent per year is what we were requiring.
That's, I know we did that over in Upper Union.
Yeah, it was five percent per year, cause it was originally three and we wanted to bump it up to cover the town.
Honestly, even the five percent isn't, in my opinion, the way to do it, the way to do is to tie it to CPI. Cause then it's, as inflation goes, that goes, done. Because five percent will happen in years if it's nine, right? If it's CPI, you're always going with inflation.
But it's still accumulating though.
But that's the point, is like, you're, the cost, if we're saying it's X amount to a decommission in year this, and after that, the cost of it would increase by the cost of inflation, just tie it to CPI, cause that's the cost of inflation. That's the way to do it, and it's all, all the CPI data's right there, it's of no mystery to anyone.
Yeah, if we, yeah, if we can somehow tie it to that, I, I don't know what's allowable for a, a bond amount.
No, I do, I do it with bonds all the time, where they just tie things to CPI.
Alright, then I, that feels, I just feel better about.
Yeah, cause then it's not a mystery to anyone, you, cause people can predict the cost, it's like, well, if it's gonna be thirty years, here's what, you know.
Yeah.
My additional follow-up is the one eighty-nine today's dollars or the ending dollars, that's today's dollars.
Yeah.
And then that's gonna grow, okay.
Beth?
Um, so for your outdoor canopies, you had said that they added lighting, Gary?
They did, up underneath, yeah.
They gave you a photometric plan? Just, am I missing it? I don't think I have that. As long as you've reviewed it, but that brings me, my next question is, um, that they've asked for a waiver for providing outdoor lighting, so. You are no longer requesting the waiver for outdoor lighting?
Correct.
Correct.
We, yeah, when we responded to Beta's comments, we provided the photometric plan and updated, uh, waiver list.
Apologize, my computer's not on, so only have.
No, mine is, the one I have dated the twen- April twenty-third still has that waiver.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just didn't have the Beta stuff in front of me, so we're getting rid of the waiver for providing outdoor lighting. But you're still asking for the waiver for open space, snow storage and parking areas?
Um, I believe that's correct, let me just go check what we originally had. So the, the three original, uh, waivers that I have were for the outdoor lighting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, oh, I see, okay, open space areas, no storage and parking, yeah, excuse me, yeah, so that's correct.
That's still, okay, and then you are asking for a waiver for providing a complete landscaping plan, including existing vegetation and proposed plantings. I understand why, but related to the trees that Gary had mentioned, um, for me, it's just showing, I think showing where you're gonna.
Okay.
Put them.
And it's just location, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, otherwise.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem.
Fine with not, I'm fine with that waiver request. And then you're no longer looking for the provided photometric plan because you did provide one, so we'll get rid of that one too, okay. Alright, um, then mentioned having to go to ZBA, um, so they have to ultimately give you the permission to allow the use for under the canopy?
Correct, and actually we did get approval on Thursday.
We did, oh, okay, you're all set then, great, that helps me a lot, thank you, then I have no further comments.
Okay, good, Jay?
Uh, I guess the only question I have is there's any increase in electrical infrastructure outside of your site? Like, is grid gonna have to do anything to accommodate you guys going down Upper Union or anything?
Not that I know of, the, you know, we're basically removing the light fixtures that would be, you know, where the canopies are going. Replacing those with, uh, light fixtures that are under the, um, that are under the canopies. As far as the, um, the interconnection, is, was that part of your question?
Yeah, you putting a lot of juice back on the grid or no? Or any?
I can answer that.
There's, there's no export.
There is no export?
It's gonna be consumed.
Within the site?
Within the building, yes.
Cause I was, you know, curious to potentially pack it on Upper Union if you had to upgrades, but you're not gonna need them, so that's all I got.
Yeah, he was just gonna, uh, Mr. Devon, you wanna respond?
Hey, this is Matt Devon, I'm actually the contractor on the site, the electrical engineer, uh, the electrical contractor and, um, yeah, there'll be no digging up from the utility. Everything is coming out of the building, um, from the existing, um, medium voltage in depth.
Good, well? Thank you.
And then I just wanna make a comment on the lighting as well, uh, on the lighting, they'll also be decreased down to thirty percent, um, at night. To meet the mass, um, laws for energy.
Okay. Good. Good, Matt? Uh, Mike, comments, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the only question I had, will there be a need for a noise barrier for the inverters and is there any need for that?
Uh, we didn't, I didn't think so, uh, and I think part of it was, it was close in terms of, uh, that, but they, they were, there should have been credits taken for the vegetation on this slope. Plus, when you look at the re- the, the receptors, they're quite a bit higher. And it was gonna be close in terms of the overall noise level, but they didn't take account the, the, the reductions associated with those benefit, those benefits. And when I looked at it, I didn't believe that it was gonna be an issue.
Okay. Great, thank you. Good? One second, thank you. Jen?
I, I already.
I didn't, I didn't know if you.
So I'm, I'm good, thanks.
Anymore.
I can talk all night, but.
Yeah, I'm just asking, okay?
So, um, I mean, I, I think everybody answered the question, ZBA's all set, uh, photometric, you're gonna show a plan with the, um, replantings?
Really, I think that was it, right?
And the update on the bond?
And an update on the bond, how do, how do we wanna approach that, do we want, I, I don't know if I wanna.
Make conditions of approval, I think.
Y- yeah, whether we take Jay's approach or we just leave it five percent and then tackle that with the next one that may come through, what's the board's feeling? I, I don't know what these gentlemen plan for.
I think Jay's approach is appropriate, however, would you work it through, uh, legal and, uh, engineering to come up with the right terminology for that?
You'll, you'll wanna do.
Yeah.
Understanding what the board's desire is? Yeah, maybe, even.
Yeah. Take a look at it, um, where, I, I haven't seen the one that's been submitted already, but we can take a look at that and work with the applicant.
I just, yeah, I don't wanna rub it up.
System, system of what we've done in the past with projects.
Yeah, we're not holding them up necessarily.
Exactly, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Then we can work with.
Okay.
Is that good, Jay?
Yeah, I think it works, yeah.
So, make a motion to close the hearing for fifty Constitution Boulevard?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we vote?
Yeah, you know what, yeah.
So, um.
We'll make, we're gonna vote tonight, it's, it's clear enough.
I would make a motion to approve the waiver for section one eighty-five thirty-one C three one for waiving open space areas, no storage and parking areas.
Second.
Second.
Second, yep.
Call and pay.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then make a motion for a waiver of section one eighty-five thirty-one C three K, um, providing a complete landscaping plan, but rather, um, just providing the location of the plantings. With, with that being said, um, I make that motion to provide that waiver.
Do you second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, and then I.
And then the bond.
Make a, a motion for a condition of approval that, uh, decommissioning bond has been set in the amount of one eighty-nine, one twenty-seven and recommend, um, the condition be added for a decommissioning plan. And then, um, also adding on to that, that, um, planning DPW and the town attorney will work with the applicant to come up with the appropriate language consistent with other decommissioning plan language in the past.
To address anticipated escalation.
Thank you.
What do we wanna put for duration of time?
Until removed.
No, yeah, just you don't.
Decommissioned, yeah.
You do not put a, yeah, just, just.
As long as the thing there increases, including to inflation.
Inappropriate to, yeah.
Alright, do I hear a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, make a motion to approve fifty Constitution Boulevard?
Do you second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, I said that, I mean.
I didn't think you heard, huh? All in favor?
See, that's what happens. Yeah. Alright, our last, ending my business for tonight. This will be our last item of business tonight, this will be for one twenty-four to one twenty-six grocery site plan modification. If I could go to Amy from Department of Plan, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, so Beta has provided an updated review letter, um, they are still in front of Conservation Commission, however, I do believe that at the next Conservation meeting, um, they do plan to make an approval. They were waiting on the final drainage layer to come in from Beta before they had made that decision.
Good, thank you, uh. Go to, uh, Gary from Beta, if you wanna give us a brief overview, please, Gary?
Uh, pretty much, they've responded to all of the comments that we had, uh, relative to it, and admittedly, this was a pretty difficult site in terms of. The overall stormwater issues associated with, because of the presence of the wetlands within. And admittedly, this was a pretty difficult site in terms of the overall stormwater issues associated with, because of the presence of the wetlands within the limits of that, uh, within the limits of that one, of that basin. That's, and if you read my letter, you'll see part of my recommendation is maybe we should wait. I, I know that there's a, an email that came through, uh, from Breakalife that indicated that the commission did discuss that one issue in terms of that, indicated that they had no issues, but I would still recommend that the commission, that the board wait until the commission is only, only on the sake that, if, just to make sure that they, when they do vote, then we're not, we're not, uh, we don't have a basin that they can't, they can't utilize. But other than that, uh, as I stated, it was a pretty difficult site, but they've done a pretty good job. I believe the light, the lighting, we still have a little bit of an issue with some light, uh, cascading beyond it, but the real bright light that was on where they had on, it was right on Grove Street. I mean, I would, they, they did move that light, so that, that, that issue has gone away. Other than, other than that, that's, I believe I had a few other issues that were, that were remaining for the board to consider, but other than that, it's pretty, it's pretty well done in, in terms of our, our review.
Okay, good, thank you. Um, before I go to Mike, I just wanna just, if you could just introduce yourselves for the record, please?
Uh, sure. Uh, Mike Hassett from Garry Aaron Hellman, and with me tonight is Ted Cannon, attorney for the project.
Thank you. Um, I'll go to, I'll go to Mike. Uh, Mike, DPW, you guys pretty much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I think they, um, they went through and addressed any previous comments. The only outstanding thing I had a little concern with is just, um, with the, uh, the existing water main, where the new addition's gonna go. It's gonna be, uh, cut and capped and reattached somewhere else. There's a section on the lower entrance where I think they're cutting a piece back there too. But we can work with them because they're gonna have to permit that to DPW for any work in the water line. So I can meet with, um, during a pre-construction meeting, go over with the, uh, water superintendent, kind of make sure we're on the same page of the extent of the water main work as it goes up into, uh, Grove Street there, so I, that can be conditioned. No, we should do that as far as the approval goes.
Okay, good, thank you. Um, I guess I'll go to the board. Uh, I'll go to Beth. Any comments, questions?
You guys have gotten a lot done between meetings, so, um, great job working together, getting that looked along. There's a lot of comments you've addressed, so thank you.
There was.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, good work with, uh, Beta and with you guys doing that, thank you. Um, I, I think as long as, you know, as said by Gary, you know, you get through Conservation Commission and you're addressing all the comments and the board's comments from past meetings, I think you're headed towards the end is near, hopefully.
So, speaking of that, if I can, um, the ConCom, um, was looking to wait, um, to hear from you guys about all drainage issues being resolved. And so we're kind of in a situation where, you know, there's, there's cross confirmations going on. That's why we provided that, we got that, the official, the unofficial meeting minutes from Breakalife for the last meeting with Conservation, you know, highlighting that this issue had been discussed um, with the, the commission and that the only reason that they hadn't closed at the previous hearing um, was that we hadn't gotten them the information seven days prior to the hearing. Um, if they, if we had, I think they would've closed it on that April seventeenth meeting. Um, and so what I, what I want, I'd like to avoid, if I can, is this kind of back and forth where each one is waiting for the commission or the board opposite them, uh, to close. Um, and so, um, as Gary and Amy mentioned, that there, there was a, a communication sent out from Breakalife, basically highlighting that all issues had been resolved and that they were ready to close at the next hearing. Pending, no new issues were raised here or, um, in the final peer review letters, which confirmed for me, Gary, that, that there weren't. Um, and so we'd like to request, we, we all acknowledge you wanna be careful, but we feel comfortable with the commission is ready to approve at the next hearing. Um, and then.
We did get, uh, comments from Beta, uh, from Friday on the Conservation side saying that everything was fine, which we hadn't received at the ConCom meeting the last time we were there. So that has come in subsequent. They were kinda just, you know, everything looks fine, but we need to hear from Beta. But now that's in, that's all fine, that's a clean letter. So we're just hopeful to not lose a couple of weeks, um.
I understand, and the last thing I like to do to any applicant is prolong their appearance before any boards. You got work to do and you wanna get moving. I understand that time is money. Um, for me personally, I know that typical planning board procedure is to make sure ConCom does close and vote on the hearing before planning board votes. Um, so for me, that's just how I feel. Um, and I think if there is something that still strikes Gary as being something that needs to be addressed, I think that, you know, Amy can communicate to Breakalife that we're good to go, so there isn't that back and forth, but I'm one person, so I defer to the rest of the.
But I was gonna say, is it worth just, I don't know what you mean, these public records are worth putting on the record right now that there's no more of the drainage issues on the site? And that should satisfy the concerns of the Conservation Commission? Um, do you have?
I think, Gary, did you?
Yeah, Gary, do you have?
Yes, no, I, I agree. They, they indicated, but, you know, until you see the vote.
I guess one of, that's not what I'm saying.
That's the only, I, I mean, I hate, I don't count your eggs, but.
No, what I'm going with is, in your opinion, Gary?
Yes.
Are there outstanding issues that need to be addressed?
No, no, they have no.
So that's what I was looking for.
No, no, they have no outstanding issues.
It is now on the record in the planning board that there are no outstanding issues with the drainage, so that should suffice for conservation moving forward.
No, no.
Yeah. Yes.
It should. Yeah. So I'm gonna make a recommendation that, um, we'll wait to hear from Conservation Commission. We wanna make sure they're signed off prior to us. But on the next meeting, we'll close it and we'll vote it at the same time. That way that we don't hold you up. Um, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna start a precedent with Conservation and, uh, Planning Board. Everybody's gonna be signed off prior to coming to us. And I wanna keep it that way, or else it's gonna, the waters are gonna get muddied up a little bit. So we'll close it and vote at the next meeting. Just make sure ConCom's all signed off. Make sure Gary's all set with his drainage couch and make sure everything's all squared away. Um, I did have one comment in reference to the site, um. With, with all the work on the left side of the building, um, and this may just go to the, um, uh, pre-construction meeting, just a traffic plan and how you're gonna work the trucks in and out of the facility?
Absolutely. What, yeah, that, that's part of our plan. It's something that Conservation asked also for a more detailed, um, construction schedule. And once we have a contractor on board with the project and he's developed his internal plans, um, we'll make sure that they're made available and kind of go through traffic management and a, a more general detailed breakdown phasing.
Yep, make that part of, let's sit down with Mike with the pre-construction meeting, uh, so that way there, everybody knows. And the only other question I had and comment is about two months ago, um, a trailer failed to, um, make the exit out of the front entrance and he almost turned it over, so they had to pull the truck out of the main entrance.
Mm-hmm.
I'm wondering if there's something can, because now you're gonna be bringing even more trucks in. He almost ended up in the culvert in the, in the, um, in the right side, left side of the site as he was pulling out. And how he got there, I don't know, but he was, he was in a precarious spot. I was wondering if you can look at that, because now if we're gonna be bringing more traffic. Yep.
Was it this entrance right here, in this corner, making that turn out?
Yep, yeah, he, there was nothing there to stop him and he actually, he almost started going down the embankment.
Are you looking for something like maybe, uh, the installation of, of bollards or some other, some other physical barrier that might be more decorative?
Something just so they don't.
I'm not sure if they don't want like, you know, industrial level bollards, but maybe something like, even like a stone wall or some other kind of barrier.
Yep. Something to, just so the guy doesn't wanna, you know, roll his truck down the hole, cause he, he actually had to get pulled up by a tow truck.
Okay, would, would that be something that you'd be comfortable with me working with, with Mike and Gary during pre-con?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure you guys are aware of it that, especially if we're bringing more trucks in and out, that, that entrance gets looked at just for safety purposes, cause he did tie up, uh, both lanes of Grove Street when he got hung up.
You can see the wear marks on the.
Yeah, 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 actually you can see, yeah.
On the turn.
Yeah. So, maybe they can put a small retaining wall or some kind of, uh, like you said, bollards or something of some sort, just to pull them back in towards the road, that's all. But other than that.
Mr. Chick, just as, as a refresh, what's the traffic flow again, once the addition's done for trucks?
So trucks will be entering, uh, Prime Park and then coming down. This is the truck entrance here. It's entrance only, so they won't be exiting from this direction. So they'll enter in, there's two new loading docks here that they'll be able to back into. Um, and then the rest of them will come down. There's new tractor-trailer parking along the bottom here, which is present now and that's a large portion of the project. It'll help clean the site movement up a lot. Cause right now, if you go in there during the day, they're just idling all over the place, kind of parked parallel. Um, so that's, that's this in here, and then there's loading docks all along this building face. Um, and they'll, once they're done, they'll leave the site out this entrance here and either turn left or right for their destination.
Okay. Yeah, I think given that traffic plan, to the chairman's point, that's a tremendously important to address. I'll go first. Yeah, Mark?
I, also, I went only because I've driven tractors before.
Mm-hmm.
The northeast dock.
Uh, this one here?
Yep.
Yep.
How far of a back is that? Because that's a blindside back. And some of these, I'm as- I'm assuming some of these larger tractors are gonna have sleeper berths and that's gonna be.
I'm not entirely sure the length. We did do turning movements that, that were evaluated by Beta, um, for those two docks. But I can bring those up and kind of show you the movement that's anticipated. First try, another page. Um.
But they're blindside back, so that's, that's a tough back to do.
Yes, so, so it, it's, it's, it's a pretty straightforward back up, so you, you back up and then it's just one, one swing out to the side and you're, you're back in.
Alright, go ahead.
Um, it looks like it's maybe three to four truck lengths.
So fifty-three, that's a hundred fifty-two, five hundred feet?
Give or take, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, that's a long way for a big trip, for a big truck. That would be my only concern there.
Um, I, I do think that these trucks are primarily, um, operator, are owned, are operated by me, a lot of them, so I think they'll be, come familiar with that entrance and that, that movement. Um, but that's.
And the other one would be in, in the dock on the front, that, uh, what do you call it, northwest?
Yes.
Is there any way of letting people not, truck drivers not to back in off the road? I know you have turning radiuses in there, but truck drivers will do what truck drivers do.
Uh, I, I, I can't say for, I think the only thing that you would be able to do would be signage and then it would be up, um, for police enforcement, I suppose, but um, I don't think that they would object to that.
Yeah, just if they turn with inside, you know, that area instead of coming off the street.
That's, that's not the intent, um, but I understand the concern, that, that's something that you'd wanted to condition. I don't think that there'd be an objection for signage.
That's just looking at my past experience, that's all.
I would, I would add to that too and say if that's an, an entry point for trucks like that, posting no parking on the street, so that there's no trucks waiting to get in if someone's in there. They have to come into the lot or hang somewhere else. They can't park. Grove Street's kinda tight there.
Yeah, if, if there's additional signage you guys would like, uh, regarding that northwest entrance, I, I don't think anything would be objectionable to the applicant.
Great.
Good, thank you. Good point. Jay? All good?
How's that?
Okay, so make a motion.
Before we, before we move on, um, there are a couple deferrals to the board that Gary mentioned. You know, just things about, uh, either, either waiver requests or just, just opinions that, that he wanted you guys to express. So, uh, comment Z two in the letter, uh, providing data quantifying sound, noise, vibration, odor and flashing. You know, our, our position is that, you know, the, the, the use hasn't changed. It's just a warehouse expansion. That's not, that's not changing. Um, and we don't anticipate any, any new impacts along that front. But that, that requires a, either a waiver or just a sign off on your end.
Okay.
Side with me.
Yeah, I don't know. Everybody good with that one? Good, that. Chris, you good?
Yes, sir.
So you'll be good?
Yeah, great. Um, and then the other thing he printed, the lighting, um, so I think we need a waiver technically for that minor spillover. I think it doesn't reach Grove Street. It, it just, it's just the right of way.
Could you show us on the drawing where that one specifically is?
I can. I don't think I printed the revised lighting plan, but I can show you the old one where the issue was and had been.
And that's been removed, right?
It, it's been moved, yes. Not, not completely removed, but it has been updated.
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's, um, Gary, did you say that there was still spillage somewhere on the site?
Little bit, a little bit, but it's pretty much in the intensities that we've seen in the past.
Yeah, I just wanna know where it was.
Just a little bit of spillage too, even onto the Amigo pro- uh, across, uh.
Back, back right corner?
Yeah, yes, that back right corner, yeah.
I mean, I think if anything, I, if it's on the residential property for Amigo, perhaps bringing.
They're not, no, they're not, no, everybody's, everybody's owned in the same.
It's a school, right?
Yeah, but not.
It's not the residential school? Oh, okay, sorry, yeah, sorry, from the, from area.
So I, I believe the issue originally was over in this location here.
Yes.
And then there was another one back in this corner.
I think there's, there's a little more.
I think there's a little bit right in here.
Oh, that one was okay.
Yeah, right in here with the ones mounted off of the building.
There was a little bit of spillage.
It's minimal?
Minimal, yeah.
I don't know, waiver?
Yes, this waiver should be replaced.
Had a waiver then?
Didn't you say?
Sure.
Minimal to the extent it doesn't cross Grove Street?
Well, it, it's, it's in Grove Street. There is a little bit in Grove Street. I think, uh, tenth of the.
The only concern is just, just thinking that, that forty B project was approved, it's immediately across the street from that entrance. So just if there's spillage that goes over into the adjacent property.
I don't believe it crosses right away.
It doesn't cross Grove Street, but it is, it is on the end.
Punches.
Yeah, and if, and if you want a little bit of spillage, you want it on the main road there too, for safety for the entrance.
But if it's always spilling into the entrance?
Yeah, that's, that's a good thing, yeah. Yeah, for safety purposes, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just incorporating that revised photometric plan into your plan set too?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was incorporated and what was submitted. I just didn't print it for tonight.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Alright, so.
Um, alright, the next one, um, let's see, so the parking calculations. So originally during the review, Beta was looking at it as a combined site, both one twenty-six and one twenty-four Grove Street. Um, it was evaluating whether or not this parking over here was fully adequate. Um, we requested that for the purpose of this site plan review, we just looked at one twenty-six Grove Street since there's no work proposed on one twenty-four. Um, and all these parking spaces are three hundred feet away from the entrance, so they wouldn't count anyway. They're not really changing. My understanding, these parking spaces are underutilized anyway, so they're, they're adequate based on what the applicant has told me. And then as far as parking requirements go, um, so for the main warehouse building, um, three hundred and sixty-six spaces are required, existing. There were ninety-two, including the five handicap spaces. And we are bumping that up to a total of two hundred and seventeen, including tractor-trailer spaces, um, which is in excess of what the addition would require. So the addition warehouse, it's all warehouse, no office. That requires eighty-seven. Um, and we are providing ninety-four passenger vehicle spaces new, um, kind of throughout the site. So there's, they're clustered here, there's a couple up on this side, and there's a row of them in here. So we're, we're, we're fully meeting the requirements of the warehouse addition. Um, and then we're providing a lot more tractor-trailer parking spaces. And so while we don't necessarily meet the, uh, the zoning defined, uh, parking requirements, uh, we do for the warehouse addition and we think that overall the site's gonna have adequate parking for its needs.
Amy, Amy, you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I mean, the board's fine with that. I don't think it, it, um, needs a waiver.
No, I think that the applicant knows what their building needs for parking.
Okay, it's basically just warehouse storage anyways, you know? It's more, uh, access in and out, per se. Uh, Gary, you comfortable with the monitoring as well?
Yes.
Okay.
The rest of the board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, good.
Uh, and I think that was the second one. There was kind of two of them. There's the one twenty-four and the determination, so that was two of the references. And then, actually, there was three of them, so that, those three are taken care of. Uh, photometric, again, we went through that. Um, and then screening on the new entrance. So, um, we're providing additional screening out here at this entrance here. So we're providing, I believe this is five, uh, Norway spruce in through here and a red maple at this corner. A bunch of new landscape screening up in here and then a couple more, uh, shrubs here. Uh, three more, uh, Norway spruces on this front and then existing vegetation in here will be maintained for, you know, screening at the entrance and in here. Um, and we wanted to, uh, avoid putting new screening trees right up to the right of way to preserve site distance, uh, coming out. And so with the, Beta had requested that we go over the screening and have you determine if it's adequate, um, in your opinion.
Gary, are you comfortable with?
I, I was comfortable with it, but it's, it's your decision.
Yeah, 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 no, we just don't wanna make sure we block any of the entrances once they're in full growth, that's all.
Right. And, and we're, we're happy to, to monitor that. If it becomes a problem, I'm sure that they'd be happy to work with, uh, work with the town to get that addressed.
Everybody comfortable with that? Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chair, I was, sorry, to go back to the parking, just I don't remember, refresh my memory on the conversation. Are what you're proposing, are you putting in more than what's going to be needed? Are what you're proposing, are you putting in more than what's going to be needed on day one?
So.
Based on the anticipated use of the facility and how it operates? I understand that you're proposing what's required for the bylaws for the addition.
Yes.
Those additional parking spaces, but is that more, just like the existing square footage would require some ridiculous amount of, you know, spaces that aren't even utilized on the site, is that similar for the addition use?
I believe so. I believe that they're, they're not having trouble with parking for passenger vehicles at this time, it's just tractor-trailers that they've been having the issue. And so we are exceeding the number amount for the bylaw by that warehouse, and we don't think that's eighty-seven that the bylaw requires would be needed based on the operation of the existing building. They've been getting by with ninety-two spaces for this entire three hundred and fifty-five thousand square foot building.
I guess what I'm getting at is like, if we don't need to build all of it right now, you're showing a plan that shows if it's needed in the future, particularly that additional island, I'm looking at Plan South for that, yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, like if you don't, I don't want to mess up all your great calculations, but you prove the calculations work out if the infrastructure's there, can it not be paved on day one, and at least if it's needed in the future, could you go?
Land bank it.
Yeah, land bank it, yeah. And, and, I mean, I prefer less impervious for the environment, and I'm sure you guys would save on cost on day one, but like at least we know it works in the future should it be needed.
Yeah, since we're coming back, I can talk that over with the applicant and make sure they're comfortable with it. And I think it's a reasonable idea, I'll see if he's comfortable with it, and if not, then I'll have an answer for you at the next hearing.
We've done that in the past, too. And before you come back, just double check with Gary and his staff, just to make sure he's comfortable with the change. And then Gary knows we've done this two or three times already.
There's nothing more than I hate paving a giant parking lot for the sake of paving a parking lot and it sits empty.
Exactly.
It's not good for anybody.
Through the chair for clarity, we're talking about grading, making it ready, but not paving it.
No, just leave it idle.
Just leave it.
Leave it for future use. Just put in the site plan something like, can be paved in and out of point of view. So let's say NAG sends their, sells their building, and someone else comes behind, they can scrape and pave for the plan.
They'll have to do the infrastructure improvements, yeah.
Got it, okay.
Everything's on the plan.
Correct, yeah. And you can zone that off, you know, you can put, hash it out and say, you know, future parking, if necessary, that's all.
Yeah, I'll see what they think, and then, and then if, if they, if they agree with it, we can update the plans to reflect, you know, that potential future build out.
We just did that on construction.
The only.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I realized it.
I don't think that's going to cause any problems with the wetland access. You would, because the wetland access for replication is proposed from this area, we would just need to extend that out and make sure we stay out of the buffer zone in ConCon, I think would be okay with that as well.
Just explain, where, if we, if you did put that into, you know, for future development, where would the employees park if that wasn't there?
So there's additional parking here, this would, this would all, this is all existing.
Okay.
And then this would also be constructed, this is new.
Okay.
So we're looking at this southwest island. That would be the one that'd be getting backed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So there would be plenty of available spaces as long as that's all that was needed. But there is, you know, we're not, we're not getting rid of all of it, you know, it'd just be that one little new extension.
So employees wouldn't need a backpack to go for good work?
No.
Or an UBA.
You good? Chris, you good?
Yeah, oh, yeah, there was, there was one more thing.
Gee, I thought you said you had two.
Just a couple. So there was a question about street trees on Prime Park. We elected to not propose them because of the proximity to the building. We didn't feel that that was an appropriate location for trees, given that, you know, pushing the building would interfere with the foundation, it probably wouldn't survive given the shading. But we wanted to check in, Gary asked that we check in with you to make sure you're okay with that decision.
Can you replicate them elsewhere?
Yeah, we'll put a log row of bush, boxwoods or something like that.
I think that would be fine, if we would just sort of put some kind of additional bush plantings along that, that street, just for, to break up the building facade.
Everybody like? Gary, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Mike? Okay.
Gary's got to put this stuff over there.
I didn't want to leave, I didn't want to leave you out, Mike. I'm putting Gary on the spot. I know, I don't like making decisions yet. Doing good so far, let's keep it up.
That's why his letter says to refer to the board.
I believe it's only a few more. Fence around this base. There's not one now, and it's going to be difficult to access for the public if this is going to be a big retaining wall in through here. But, but, you know, Gary was asking if a fence should be provided around this, this lower basin.
What's the depth?
I believe six feet, give or take?
Put a fence.
Put a fence, okay. And then I think, I'll just have to run that by Conservation, we might have to do something with like a raised bottom for.
We got to make sure everybody's safe.
You mentioned retaining walls, my favorite subject. What height?
That is about twenty-two feet, I think, off the top of my head. That is a recommended condition from Gary, he did look at that. We did provide a, not a concept wall, but a cross section of a wall.
Can you make sure that's on your set of drawings, stamped engineer drawing, if you can get it?
So that was, the condition that Gary recommended was to provide that prior to start of construction for review by Beta, and we're comfortable with that.
Everybody good with that?
We, we've been having a lot of sites with pretty substantial retaining walls.
I'm familiar.
I want to make sure that they're on drawings, so when Beta goes out, or Mike goes out, or anybody from the town goes out, that there, it's already on the drawing and that they already see what they're looking for, and it's stamped by engineers, so there's no guessing.
We absolutely knew that was going to be a requirement, we've made the applicant aware of it, and he's, he's working with some people to get that taken care of.
So as long as it is and that gets incorporated into the drawings, we'll be fine.
Sure. There's a basin here that technically doesn't meet the twenty-foot setback to the right of way. That's an existing non-conformity, we're not modifying this pond, but Gary asked that we make sure that you're okay with that continuing as is.
Yeah, that was a pre-existing, that's where the truck almost ended up, yeah.
Yeah.
Pre-existing trailer in the hole.
That we went over on.
Yeah, big sand trap.
I think that's it.
Yeah.
Oh, the O and M document having some additional, additional manufacturer spec sheets in it, which I emailed to Amy this afternoon.
Which I'll provide at the next meeting.
Okay.
And now that's it.
You sure now?
I am sure.
Poor Gary's been on the spot tonight, you know.
Anybody have any comments or questions? So make a motion to continue to?
May twelfth.
May twelfth? Second?
Second.